Hello. Hello, Madam Chair. I'm here with Allison Estvez, the architect for this project. We're here on behalf of our clients, Brian Chavez and the Chavez family, who own and live in this building. They're seeking to add additional living space within the allowable FAR zoning, but requiring rear yard setback and building height relief for primarily the third floor of this existing two-family corner building located at Three Bruce Street. If you go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, here you have the existing condition, beautiful Victorian two-family property. It is that third floor that really is going to be lifted up and expanded. And that's the case that's before you today. If you go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, this just shows the butters and the slide after that as well shows you the butters as well, just to give you a sense of what's what's immediately around us in this area. So you can go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. Again, those are the other butters of the property. The next slide on page six really gets to the heart of the issue here. This is the site plan. The white area is area that's within the billable non-setback area. The red represents the setback with the Bruce Street, the front door being at the bottom of the screen and then Ashmont Street, the side of this corner lot and that rear yard in the back. And the rear yard is showing the twenty-seven and a half rear yard because it's a shallow lot. And so the shallow lot reduces from the forty that's required for this particular structure in this one F five thousand district. The if you go to the next slide, actually, if you go two slides to page eight, here it shows the work that we're doing, the left being what's there today and the right being what we're proposing. And as you can see, we're we're kind of lifting that center portion and we're expanding those those two bedrooms off the rear of the property on the right that you can see that net increase. Interestingly, the rear yard setback actually gets a little bit less of a setback. We're not even going as far back as what's currently there right now. I'll show you that on a different slide. If you go to the next slide there, next two slide, actually, this is just a demo plan slide, so I don't think that's going to give you much. But this slide here actually gets to what I was just saying. The left being what's there today and then the right being what we're proposing of the third floor. As you can see, we're adding. Yeah, and you can see that's really shows the massing of the rear of the property getting a little bit less, but more living space nonetheless being increased. And then if you go to the next slide, there's actually even a better way to kind of see this. Here we go again. The left being what's there today, the right being the increased height of the third floor and that addition of those two bedrooms off the back of the property. That's that's really the bulk of the work there. If you go to the next slide, there's another vantage for you. Here, what we're looking at, this is actually the rear of the property. So now Bruce Street, we're on the we're on the back of the property. Bruce is on the opposite side of the building, like the right side of the building, if you will. And what you can see here is on the left, the existing building today, what they're going to do is demo and remove those back portion, those back kind of odd squares, and they're going to bring back in a solid mass on the right with a gable, the 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 structure. And this went through a landmark process prior to getting here where we worked through these finer details around historic preservation issues. And as you can see, the exterior entrance has been or exit really has been upgraded too, so that you have a direct exit from that that second floor there. If you go to the next slide, there's another vantage that will show you. Again, that what we're trying to do here. From the front of the house, it really looks very similar, but you see that increased massing on the third floor. Next slide, please. This just gives you kind of a three sixty view of the building. This is some of the detail we went through with the historic landmark overview process, detail around the shingles and the different types of materials that are being used and that we really got into when we went through that process. Next slide, please. More of the same of just the different side of the building, this being the rear and side of the building. Next, next slide. And that's it. And just I'm sure just so that again, just to reiterate, there's two two zoning relief. It's the building height stories because we're not exceeding in height, but we are exceeding in stories. Two and a half is allowed here. We would now be a full three. And then, as I mentioned, that rear yard, the work we're doing, even though it's lesser, it's still work in that rear yard that triggers that violation. Other than that, the St. Mark's Civic Association sent a letter that I hope you received of support. I'll.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none can have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office is deferred to the judgment of this board, some background information, the community process. ONS hosted a butters meeting on March twentieth. It was lightly attended. Our office is unaware unaware of any concerns at this time. And as the applicant's representation representation mentioned, they went before the St. Mark's Civic Association, which voiced their support for this proposal. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
I'm sure we have no raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next, we have case BOA one five zero three eight nine seven with the address of twenty ten Dorchester Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Hi, Victoria. I sent a request to unmute you. Is that you, Victoria Fong?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead. Go ahead. Are you gonna? Okay, someone else gonna be speaking on your behalf?
No, no, I'm going to represent myself.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
So currently, we've currently is a single house and we would like to convert into two-family. There's no, I see the refusal letter. So we don't need to cut any the right side for the parking. And also, we already have a dome there, but I just need to make it bigger to fit the bathroom in there. And same same footage inside, but differently out. As you can see, as if it won. So a system one is already have two and a half. And the second one, the proposal, second floor plane. So we just want to put the bathroom there and the kitchen on second floor. And the added need to add a knock. It's already a dome there, but it's not big enough. So we just want to see we can make it bigger to have the standard size bathroom.
So just to confirm, the majority of the work is internal except for installing or expanding your dormer in the attic. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any questions from the board?
We can ask what from from the lower mill.
So with that, let's have public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office hosted a butters meeting on February twenty first. There were no issues expressed from a butters in that meeting with the proposal. The applicant went on to meet the Lower Mill Civic Association, which offered their support for this proposal. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Sir?
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five eight five seven four six with the address of forty-five forty-seven Brayburn Road. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Stenbridge, Ms. Better Brazza, Madam Chair. Nice to see you on a Thursday afternoon. Richard Lynn's two forty-five Sumner Street on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this is a relatively straightforward proposal. My client acquired this property in two thousand twelve. It was acquired with the understanding it was a two-family dwelling. It's been taxed as a two-family dwelling since two thousand twelve, according to city assessors' records, as is typically the case that I normally see with these types of situations, an insurance inspection revealed that the legal occupancy of the building was in doubt and therefore was required to seek appropriate occupancy as a two-family dwelling. And that's what we'll before the board for. So we jump to the next slide, please. So relatively simple change in the occupancy. We're not changing it in respect to the footprint of the building. It's literally self-contained with the existing building itself. It will be continued homeownership. Next slide, please. So as you can see, just quick zoning overview, it is located backing up to the Stony Brook Reservation, George Wright Golf Course, oversized lot of roughly, I believe, nine thousand square feet. Next slide, please. Our zoning refusal cites two items, the off-street parking and the use. This is a one F district. As I mentioned, it is a longstanding use over twelve years as a two-family dwelling. The property immediately next door is also used and occupied as a two-family. So it would not be the only two-family in the area. Next slide, please. Just a quick zoning summary. I won't go into too much detail, but we're not, again, not making any changes with respect to the building itself. The building pretty much conforms with the one of six thousand dimensional regulations. The only items that would be triggered based upon the legalization of the use would be the use of variance and a parking variance, since it does require four spaces. And there are two garage spaces. I would point out there is sufficient room to add additional parking on site as well. Next slide, please. Quick bird's eye view, we can probably scroll through these very quickly, just so you can see the surrounding context, but it does, as I said, back up to the Stony Brook Reservation as well as George Wright Golf Course. Next slide, please. Next slide, we can come back to those. Any questions? See, I have the context of the neighborhood. Next slide. Street view, next slide. Next slide. And go one further after this. Yeah, so our ground level shows the garage as well as the basement of the existing structure. We do have availability for utilities in the in the lower level as well. Next slide, please. We can see here, the main level just says living area, including the kitchen, dining, et cetera. It is set sealed off from the other portion of the house. Again, this is how the our client acquired it back in two thousand twelve. Next slide, please. Upper level here shows the bedroom, bath and an office that is occupies the upper level. And next slide, please. Just elevations, just we included them, but there is no change to the building itself. As I indicated, this is all generally existing conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions of the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none may have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Sorry about that. ONS hosted in a butters meeting for the applicant on Tuesday, February twenty seven. They met with the Group Park Neighborhood Association on March fourth of two thousand twenty-four and the civic voted in support of this application. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the chairman. Sorry, to the chairwoman. Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Madam Chair, we have no raised hands, sorry. Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'll see you Tuesday.
Next, we have case BOA one five seven five eight six eight with the address of two ninety-four Metropolitan Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain, please?
Hello, Madam Chair. Judah Manny got here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. We are here to present this project, which is currently a two-family house and a single-family zone. The work that we are proposing really is not affecting triggering any dimensional zoning requirements, but but the fact that we are proposing to expand the existing two-family into the single-family, so that has triggered the zoning requirement, triggered us to go to the zoning board. So what my client is proposing is to expand the second unit. Right now, it's a two-family unit. The first unit is staying the same. What my client's proposing to expand the second unit into the attic. If you can move to the next to the next slide, right now, you can see on this page, you have the existing floor plans where we have the first floor, which has one bedroom. First unit, one bedroom. The second unit has two bedroom and the attic is right now unfinished. So what my my client's proposing to do is to to we do the attic by by turning the hip roof into a A-frame roof and adding a couple dormers, allowing the the head height into the attic and to propose three bedrooms and two baths into the attic. It's a growing family. They've just had two babies and they want to stay in the neighborhood. So instead of moving, they're hoping they can just expand into the existing attic by by increasing the height a little bit and allowing them to add some additional bedrooms. If the next page, you may we may be able to see the the existing elevation as it is right now. And then and 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 this page shows the expansion into the attic where we where we show the bedrooms and the additional bathrooms. And the next page, which should should show the front elevation has been affected. Is the like I like I mentioned before, the house currently is, this is the this is the elevation showing the 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 dormer being turning from a hip roof dormer to an A-frame dormer and with the dormer, A-frame and and with the dormer added. While we are while we proposing to do is 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 to really keep the the house as it is, it is two-family, but just expanding into the attic and and increasing the living space for the family.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office could defer to the judge of this board. ONS hosted a butters meeting on March twenty eighth, when the proposal was well received by butters who are eager to see the family stay in the neighborhood and have it continue to be owner-occupied. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thanks. And we have no raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval with a proviso that the project undergoes BPD design review, paying special attention to the roof line.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five 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 zero three with the address of fifty Prescott Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Yes, Mrs. Stenbridge. So good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good to see you on a Thursday evening. My name is Derek Small and I'm the attorney for the project. I have a business address of one Dobson Road. And today we're here seeking relief to erect a rear addition to the one-family dwelling. The zoning sub-district here is a one F six thousand and our lot size is approximately five thousand square feet. The violations on the refusal letter are the FAR, which the requirement is point five. We are proposing point seven. Side yard violation requirement is ten feet. It's at three point three and a half feet. It's a pre-existing non-conform three point four, pre-existing non-conforming condition. It's already existing with the current structure. And then the rear yard violation, the requirement is forty feet and we are proposing eighteen. As you can see, as on the site plan that's in front of you, the addition, it says proposed addition of five hundred square feet. It's two floors, so it would be a thousand square foot. A thousand square feet added to the existing property. And again, we are still eighteen feet away from the property line in the rear. My client, Joe Gardner, is on the line. Has four kids. His family is expanding as he wishes to move his mom in with him so that she can age in place. I'll stop there and I can answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Thank you. Question of BPA's recommendation comments about a mature tree in the rear. Can you speak to that?
Those are just, I'll stop right there and I'll get back to that. Joe, is there Joseph's on the line? In the rear of the property, I think there is a tree in the rear, but if that's an issue for the BPD, I don't think that it has to come down. I don't see it on the on the site plan.
Okay.
But I'm not sure that it even exists. But if you scroll down to the pictures, again, I took pictures from on the side, just showing that there is three families in in the in the area as well. That's the rear of the yard, so.
Okay, questions from the board?
Not a tree back there. And those are just pictures of other three families, twos and threes in the neighborhood.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the at the Google Earth and it seems like the existing tree is not on your property.
Yes, it's not. There's a tree back there, but it's not on our property.
Right, so the the main concern would be with the addition, would it, you know, how much of the canopy would you have to remove, if any?
I don't think we would be removing any canopy because it's on the neighbor's property. If if it extended over onto our property, I don't think it's going to require any removal of the canopy, but I don't know if Joseph or Farad, you can speak to that, but we don't have.
And do you have a butters support, the rear butters support for the project?
I don't know. I know we had meetings. We had the butters meeting. See, stop right there for a second. That is the butters garage backing up to our property. And again, our addition is still going to maintain eighteen feet from that fence inward towards our properties. So I don't know why the abut would be opposed to it. It's still, they can't see anything from their backyard to direct a butter because that's their garage. And we're still going to have eighteen feet from that fence inward to the edge of the property. What? Yeah, what you're seeing now is the the butter in the rear and that's their garage butting up to our fence.
Can we have public testimony so we could, yeah, learn a bit more on that question?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Cecily Graham with the office of with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted in a butters meeting for the applicant on Tuesday, January twenty third. There were some concerns raised about the applicant's current use of the family of of the home as a two-family that the applicant did address, that it's currently being used as a one-family. The applicant did meet with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association on April fourth of two thousand twenty-four. Those questions were raised again. The applicant did agree to meet with the butters and have since covered their concerns. However, the association sends a letter of opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board.
So can you clarify, you you it sounded like you said issues were addressed, but then there's still a letter of opposition. Were you part of that process? Do you understand what was addressed and what's still outstanding?
So the issue that was raised, there was some concern that there were two stoves. One of the attendees of the meeting, I guess, pulled some information about this property and found out that there were two stoves existing. They wanted to know why there was a need for two stoves if it's one family. So that was the concern. They asked if ISD could stop by to do a walkthrough to kind of check the property. ISD did stop there and was able to take a look at the property. They didn't raise any flags that would. Well, they, yeah, they didn't raise any flags, but they did say there were some parts of the property that they were unable to get into that the applicant did not, I guess, did not allow them to enter some parts of the property. So they were able to do from from what they were allotted. They were able to to look into the property. But all of this was requested by the the folks at the specific. And so they just decided that because there were so many outstanding things that they wanted covered, which was one, is this really a one-family or two-family to to them? They didn't believe that the applicant, and this is one person, to be honest. But they raised that concern that they they just didn't believe that the applicant was being truthful with what the current use of the property is, therefore might not be honest with going forward, what they're trying to do now, if if that means that they're gonna try to profit off this property as a two-family. Those were the concerns and they were not completely convinced that this was for his family. But again, every time those questions were raised, the applicant did cover them, did, you know, name that his family from Jamaica were coming and that's why he would need the 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 ADU to house those members of his family.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I also step in because I Jessica Thomas from Inspection Services. So we did receive a call just requesting the information that Cicely mentioned. We did have inspectors go out and everything did check out. It is being currently used as intended to. So there were no issues. I just wanted to speak up that we did hear from the neighborhood group as well and had a chance to speak to the owner and was able to confirm that the property is being used as intended. It doesn't seem to, whatever is being, you know, used for the property has anything to do with this current issue. So just wanted to, you know, mention that it said that. Yep. And then I'll open up the floor. Is any of the left official offices on? Nope, okay. I'll open the floor to Lauren and then go to the caller. Lauren?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I typed a lot into the chat. The bump out, which would be the X, the.
State your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Lauren Chandler McCloskey, eighteen eighty-one Hyde Park Ave in Hyde Park. The bump out is not twenty feet from the property line. It's only eleven point two. And that's the egress from the ADU that he currently has. Is he adding more kitchens so that he adds, he's adding another ADU? Because I question why he needs an egress, a door and stairs from the third, second and first floors, as well as an egress from the basement.
Thank you. Okay, and then caller six one seven three six four? Sent a request to unmute you. Correct. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Greg Martin, the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association on Colchester Street in the neighborhood. Prescott Street address. I want to bring on to the committee and I'm sorry if I offend. I am speaking with the committee. Madam Chair.
Can you can you please proceed? I mean, I'm having trouble hearing you. Are you in support or opposition? And can you just state? Can you, can you please proceed? I, I mean, I'm having trouble hearing you. Are are you in support or opposition, and can you just state briefly why?
No, opposition, and I want to, and I want to give the reasons, if I could. Um, right, the the zoning refusal letter um is um missing a significant violation, the open space violation. The rejection letter isn't complete. Um, I want to state that it might be um seriously incomplete. It's the A D U that was placed in the basement. And that's why there was confusion, because no one knew there was an A D U. Um, um, that's why it was, people thought it was being treated as a two-family. And he didn't explain that at the abutters meeting or the neighborhood meeting that we have an A D U in the basement. So it was always presented as a single family, even though it appeared to be a two-family. Now we understand. Um, but the A D U, um, in order to preclude all zoning violations, was supposed to be built in the complete, uh, um, a footprint of the existing building. Um, but they do have a bump out in the back, which means they're no longer precluded uh from the zoning um but zoning regulations, i.e. parking spaces apply, and indeed, they need another um, um, eighteen hundred units of open space for the second unit. So this, it terribly short on the open space violation, but that wasn't written, uh noted in the rejection letter. And and this is a, this is a significant expansion on a on a small lot. And um the abutters, the supplier of butter, um, thinks it's entirely too much.
Okay, please, please wrap up. Please wrap up.
I have no additional questions. Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please, uh, can you and or even Ms. Thomas shed light on the A D U and other conditions?
So, the current uh legal occupancy of the building is a one-family dwelling with an A D U. An A D U does not change the occupancy of the building, so it's still a one-family dwelling. And all we're doing again is erecting a rear addition to the one-family dwelling with an A D U. And so, again, the violations that were listed on the refusal letter, I can't speak is as to whether they're correct or not, but that's what we were given. That's what we're proceeding on. Um, again, my client has cooperated thoroughly with I S D. I, as Jessica said, I S D has been out there. I don't know where pe- people tend to make stuff up along the way as they go, and the fear of the unknown, I guess. I don't know, Miss Madam Chair, but again, addition to a one-family dwelling with an A D U, and uh that's what we're proceeding with.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
So just, so just for clarity, um, the extension to the rear is for the one-family dweller?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the A D U is for whatever, you know, for a family member or whoever is in.
He has four kids, and he plans to move his mom in.
Okay.
He is existing.
So can
Yes, it's existed.
Clarify to um on the chat, Lauren, uh, I think we just heard from her, Chandler, said that the tree was not in her property. Is she the rear butter?
I don't, I don't know.
Uh, it appears so on the map.
Can she clarify for saying that on record that the tree is not on her property, that if she is the rear butter?
Okay, I sent a request to unmute Lauren. Are you the rear butter, Lauren?
I don't think she is.
Oh, she said, well, it says in the chat, the tree is not on her property. Oh, but uh, um, are you the rear butter, Lauren?
I want clarification that she's not the rear.
Ms. Chandler, are you uh at eighteen eighty-one Hyde Park Ave?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so she is the rare butter.
And and you mentioned that the tree is not on your property? Correct.
That's what she's indicating.
So, Mr. Small, the surveyor, the site surveyor doesn't show the tree on your client's property. So something is incorrect.
I don't think there is a tree on our property. Actually.
On the, on the Google Earth, the tree shows it on, not on a property either, so um, I think that's what maybe B P D A was referring to in terms of um, not having like clarity in terms of the tree, but we just wanted to make sure that um, the site survey is correct, and there's not a tree at the rear property.
Joseph, could you elaborate on that?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, you can, we can hear you.
Hi, uh, good evening, Madam Chair and everyone. There is a tree, and um it's on my side of the fence. So I'd have to presume that's my tree, and um um, I was under the impression that keeping the tree might uh be okay, but if it's not, you know, that could always also be taken care of.
Okay, great. So what, so then your site survey is um, you know, doesn't show the existing tree, so I I would just say that that needed to be shown. Um, typically is existing and a new proposed, so we can assess completely what's on your property. But I have enough answers, so I'm 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 okay moving forward with the motion when when the chair allows me.
I am ready. May I have a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the applicant works with B P D A um in ensuring that the tree, if it is on their property, uh, that works within with with the tree, um, that would be my recommendation.
Is there a second?
Back.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We will uh work with the B P D A on that.
Do Sam from Legal, Madam Chair?
Yes.
In terms of the proviso that was given, um, attention to working with the tree, are there specifications on that?
So basically, um, work with the, work, I'm I'm sorry, I'll be a little bit more clear. To work with the dimensions of the rear addition to preserve the existing tree.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks for requesting that clarification.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next case?
Next, next, we have case B O A one four nine five eight zero nine with the address of eight Friendship Road. Is the app, is the applicant and or their representative is present? Will they explain, please?
This is Anthony Watford. My, my plan is to um do an addition to create a two-family dwelling. I will be own-occupied, and the rest of the unit will be occupied by family members. It'd be two different family members occupying that's just dwelling, a mother and daughter with two kids. So that's my proposal. Basically, I extend that fourteen feet in the rear. And we, I told my neighbors, the front house will stay the same, to keep the aesthetic of the street the same, and everything else, and the rear will take place.
So how far are you from the rear with the proposal and without the proposal?
Um, from the rear, I'll go back fourteen feet.
Okay. And how much does that, how much does that leave you?
Open space?
Yeah.
About, I believe thirty feet still. My lot is five thousand square feet. And I did have two meetings, and no one opposed it. Matter of fact, there was four. I've been here al- almost thirty years on this street. And basically, I'm a empty nester, so my house is pretty large for a single person. And I was hoping to have it done by last year. My sister came back from Florida, got a job with mobile, so she could work from anywhere. Yeah, I just, go ahead.
Okay, let's pause and see if there are questions from the board.
Okay.
Okay, hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. We don't have a ton of information due to the personnel changes that have occurred in our office, uh, but we understand that neighbors were notified. Uh, we're unaware of any specific concerns at this time. The applicant met with the Bellnell Family Civic Association um uh last October. Um, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion?
Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Happy birthday to me. Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one five three eight four three zero with the address of three Rosa Street. Is the applicant and or their representative is present to explain? Please go ahead.
Yes, we're here. Michael Chavez was trying to get in as a um presenter.
Looks like he needs to be raised to a panel, so.
Yes, he was trying to get in, yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike. I tried to make it. Okay, there you go. You accepted it. You just have to unmute yourself when you're ready. Wow.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, thanks.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. I'm good to you all. Uh, Mike Chavez, architect and their representative for the client, uh, twenty-six Emmane Hill Park, the address. Um, uh, Jeanette and Leah Thomas are also here. They're the owners of the single-family home located at three Rosa. Uh, we're proposing to put a rear two-story addition on an existing two-and-a-half-story single-family home. Uh, the um zoning violations for this project are an existing non-conformity, which is a side yard setback on one side, and a rear yard setback, which the rear addition triggers, as well as the F A R. Uh, we are proposing essentially an extended living area, so this, the addition uh will have its own kitchen and bathroom, a bedroom and living area, but it will have a direct connection to the existing home on the first floor. Now, the purpose of the addition is for uh Ms. Jeanette Thomas, who's the daughter of uh, um, I'm sorry, Leah Thomas is the daughter of Jeanette Thomas, uh, to allow um Jeanette to age in place. And so she's going to, the daughter will be living there in the um the new addition that we're putting in, to help take care of her as she ages, while at the same time having her own private space to be able to live in at the same time. So the house will continue to remain a single-family home, uh, with this addition on the back. Um, and uh, that's a quick summary. Uh, you know, the typical living on the first floor and and the bedroom and bathroom with closet on the second floor and small balcony.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Cecily and members of the board. Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. O N S hosted an abutters meeting for the applicant on Wednesday, January seventeenth. They also met with the East River Neighborhood Association on Monday, March eleventh of twenty twenty-four. No concerns were raised at either meeting. At this time, our office would like to defer to the chairwoman's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, members of the board.
Next, we have case B O A one five three eight four five six with the address of ninety-four Westminster Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eileen Rosa from Rosa Design and Construction. On behalf of the owner, Daniel Byes, who's right here next to me. Um, the proposed alteration is uh the construction of a rear staircase to serve as an additional means of egress for the attic floor, which is a pre-existing usable space um of the single-family dwelling. Um, the refusal letter received uh from Inspection Services Department um states that the um alteration is in violation with the rear setback. Um, the required setback in this uh zone is forty feet. The existing setback, rear setback, is thirty-three feet, and with the proposed rear staircase, um, the additional means of egress, uh, it will be um twenty-eight feet. Um, it is important to note that this is a single-family home, and there's no uh change of use or interior alterations, um, other than the proposed additional means of egress and the exterior door uh located at the rear facade. Um, this is all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. O N S hosted an abutters meeting for the applicant on Wednesday, January thirty-first. They met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association on Thursday, March seventh of twenty twenty-four, who voted to not oppose. Um, going back to the abutters meeting, there were some concerns raised, just primarily about the um stairway being built before going through the process. And they just wanted to understand uh the dynamics of that, of which the applicant was able to um cover the the question by saying this is, you know, their way of of making sure that they go through the process the right way. Um, but other than that, no other concerns were raised. At this time, our office would like to defer to the chairwoman's judgment. Thank you.
Oh, and Chair, we have no, oh, go ahead. No raised hands, thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one five four six seven five five with the address of five Reynolds Road. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Yes, I am. Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, I am Lincoln Matra. I am the owner and the applicant. Um, owner of five Reynolds Road, and also the applicant. And what we are proposing, the the address is a single-family home. Uh, it has two levels, and what we are proposing is to extend the second level, which is right over the first level of our home. Um, I'm sorry, trying to get you to the right pictures. They're a little bit skewed. But we can see, so as you can see, the the, we'll, let's stay with the plot planets there. Uh, the violations were that there was insufficient front um front depth space, the requirement is for twenty-five feet, and insufficient side space, the requirement is for ten feet. Uh, this property, uh, when we looked around at the other properties in Hyde Park, we didn't see many other properties that actually met those requirements. So um we're also not changing the footprint of the house. The foundation that's there will remain. The only modifications that we're doing is to the second level of that property, and we're just extending it for more uh living space. Um, you can go to the the next slide, trying to get you a good picture, so you can see the the drawings of what we're proposing. Keep going down. Uh, keep going down to the layout plan. Okay, so in this, in this space, there is a, a, there, I can't see really well there. It looks like it says fee number one. But there is a
One, I think.
Space number one, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is the additional space that would be built out uh on the second level of of that property.
Okay, understood. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Cecily Graham with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. O N S hosted an abutters meeting for the applicant on Tuesday, January thirtieth. They, and there were no concerns raised at that meeting. They met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association on Thursday, March seventh of twenty twenty-four, who voted to support. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the chairwoman. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one five four nine seven three six with the address of forty-three Noel Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain case to the board, please?
Hello, am I, can you see me?
We can't. Jessica, is she not a panelist? Karina?
There you go. Hi. My name is Karina Broomstein. I'm the owner occupant of the two-family at forty-three Knoll. The proposed plan is to demo the existing porch, rebuild it in the same footprint with a roof on top. The porch is a need to be replaced and we just want to make an improvement of having a roof on it so that we can use it more often when it rains.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the mayor's office deferred to the judgment of this board. ONS had the applicant circulate flyers to a Butters within three hundred feet and they're also in contact with the Longfellow Neighborhood Association and presented to them this past March. With that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
I can see a raised hand here. Second, Jennifer, are you looking to give testimony to this proposal?
Hello. You know, we live fourteen feet away, so.
State your name and address.
I'm sorry, I'm Jennifer Park, forty-five Knoll Street, Rosendale.
Okay, go ahead.
So we live next door. We're fourteen feet away. When, we're just concerned that it it at least stays within its footprint. And and the idea that at at some point, we were concerned that they're going to want to enclose it and make it part of the their house. So those, you know, affects our sunlight. We hope that the, when you, when people do anything, we have wet basements here and so we hope that the footings don't cause our flooding in our basement, which we've had in the past.
Thank you. I think she clearly stated the, it was a rebuild to the same footprint, so.
Right.
Okay, any other raised hands? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five five two four eight eight with the address of three forty Baker Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Hello, good evening, anyone, everyone. This is Trish Gilmaraes. I'm here representing three forty Baker Street. Conversion of existing two-family to a two-new condos. No change on the footprint, existing building. The only thing we're gonna be adding on is the left side back, which will be a second floor, second egress. And adding two dormers on the attic to create more livable space for the second floor unit.
Okay, so just to confirm, you're not, it's a two-family and it's staying two units?
Yes, that's correct.
Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ben Tyag, West Roxbury Neighbors Liaison from the Office of Neighborhood Services and a Butters meeting was held for this project on January seventeenth. And at that meeting, neighbors asked the proponent to move the porch from the rear of the house to the side of the house. The proponent did agree to these changes. It looks like since then, plans have not been updated. And this project was seen before the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council and was voted favorably by the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council. And in addition to that, the Office of Neighborhood Services is aware of one letter of opposition from the rear of Butter to this project.
Thank you. No raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform.
Before, before we do that, are we, are we looking at the correct plans?
I can share the screen with you and show it.
No, you, you won't be able to share the screen. I believe, I believe we have the old plan.
Would, would, would you be able to share the screen with me so I can see them?
No, we can't do that.
No, no, can we pull up this, can we pull them up again so that we can, he can double check? Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Stephanie.
Yes.
The applicant submitted some updated plans to us today and I informed them that they would need to request a deferral to allow the plans examiner to review and stamp the plans.
I see. So these are, these are not.
Both are the previous plans that the plans examiner reviewed, but they submitted some revised plans today, but that's not sufficient time for the plans examiner to review and stamp.
Okay, so this still reflects the
But this is the same, similar, right?
Yeah, I think what was changing, as they say, was the site plan.
It's the decks, the location of the decks, correct? That, that.
Yeah, the site plan, the site plan is still, is still the same. It shows the driveway on the left side of the building. That's still the same. The only thing there was the change, there was submitted today because we didn't know there was not there yet. It's just a rear deck that was moved to the left side of the building.
So the deck that we saw on the earlier screen is going to be moved to the other side, opposite side, not on the driveway side, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, there's no driveway on the right side of the building. That's the old plan. You guys are looking at it.
But the, the issue is the zoning violations still stay the same or would, or, or do or are they new ones or do dimensions change with the relocation?
Madam, we, we wouldn't know until the plans examiner review.
Okay, so now, now I get it. Okay. So I'm good with then putting a motion, potential of deferral.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure.
Or that is a motion that I put forward, a motion of deferral.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Samantha, do you have a new date for?
The date is June thirteenth, Madam Chair.
Okay, so please come back June thirteenth. We will have the updated plans and the any, what the new violations are if they are different from what we see now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five 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 six six three with the address of one oh eight Murdoch Street. If the applicant is present and or their representative is here, would they explain to the board, please?
Yeah, hello, everyone. I'm Brian and this is Trish. We're the owner occupants of one oh eight Murdoch Street. And the person listed is Victor. That's our contractor who submitted the application. But essentially what we want to do is to extend an existing dormer that's on the property. There's gonna be no change to the existing footprint. There's no changes to the current roof height either. If you go to page seven, yeah, this, okay, page eight. This shows kind of the, the current dormer that's already there and what we're doing is we're essentially just extending that one. If you go to slide ten. I think the number is a little weird, eleven? Yeah, so in this one, you can see the extension of the dormer and this additional dormer is essentially to just incorporate an additional bathroom. So right now, there's only one bathroom in the whole house and due to our expanding family, we need another bathroom in the house. It would be much more convenient. And then it'll also make our space much more usable, I think.
Yeah, if you go to page twelve, sorry, the backgrounds. Yes, this one right here, you can see that there is an existing, the existing roof line really that's like, it's very steep. So by extending the dormer, it actually enables us to use the hallway that's there because right now, you know, even I walking down the hallway would have to duck and I'm, I'm five feet tall, so it's really not usable. So it would also just be improving just the property overall so that, you know, families can stay in Brighton.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the mayor's office had to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS had the applicant circulate a notice to a Butters within three hundred feet. We did not receive any letters in support or in opposition. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. The applicant then went on to meet with the Brighton Alston Improvement Association and secured their support. With that, I'll defer to the board. Thank you.
May I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Maura, were you? Oh, I'm sorry, Maura. Sorry, Maura.
Sorry, this is Maura McCray from the councillor Brayden's office. The councillor would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Sure.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Before we move on, return and ask about your listening, please, of course. Case BOA one five eight four nine four four with the address of eighty-two to ninety-six Westland Avenue. Is someone present to represent their case now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Please, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, dear chairman and board member. My name is Haris Kumar Patel. I'm I'm owner of the Kapis Design Sub. Are we changing the progress?
No problem. May, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. We're unaware of any concerns and we don't believe that this proposal will lead to any in negative impacts to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Better Brazza.
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Mr. Stanbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
With that, we will then move forward to the rediscussion case scheduled for five P M. That is case BOA one five one eight three eight zero with the address of one oh four Child Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain case to the board, please?
For the record, Lawrence Estacara, one seventy-five Federal Street. Joining me is Chris Husford, who's the architect. This is a very unique property. It was, we believe, until about forty years ago, a garage or another form of accessory building. It was converted into a single family home about forty years ago. That's what the assessor's records suggest. And Chris has been working with Doctors Blaine and Mr. Nemzow to totally reconfigure this property. The revised plans are now on the screen, which Chris will explain. There were two Butters meetings. There were appearances before the Neighborhood Council. There were also independent, private meetings with some of the neighbors and we believe we have a plan which all are in favor of. Chris, you want to explain the new plans for the board?
Sure. Just to repeat the, or to lay out the what we're requesting relief for is front yard setback and then rear yard setback. Because we are creating a new deck by removing part of the existing building. And then excessive FAR. So we're going up to point eight. The priority for our clients is that they want to create a space that they can age in place. We're creating one internal garage space. And then Doctor Sblane is a therapist and she would like to practice out of her house. So we're creating an office and a small waiting area off on the first floor, which this is existing plan. If you want to keep scrolling down, so that's the existing rectangle. That's a three-dimensional view of the addition. And then here's a, here's a basic plan showing a new entry foyer, a single car garage, an office, a waiting area and a small powder room. On this, we would add a second floor then that would be currently used as a workshop for Mr. Nemzow. And then eventually, the idea is that could be a caregiver space. We're creating some exterior use space by creating a roof deck on a current, you know, flat roof. I don't know if there's anything else I should explain or just take questions at this point.
Yep, we can open up to questions. Are there questions from the board?
Hearing. Yes, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand BPA's concerns regarding, you know, the fight, the front and side yard. Kind of its preference to wanting to conform to that. So.
This is a revised plan. We originally submitted a plan that showed a very different configuration. And through that process, we had actually three different neighborhood Butters meetings. This is a revised plan. We originally were requesting a two-car garage. We've reduced it down to a one-car garage. We've had, we meet the side yard setbacks now. So the side yard.
So how, how, so, and, and so the existing home is to the rear. And and so your addition, what is kind of its alignment to the adjacent home? I like, I would like to know if it conforms to where the building is to your butter.
The, the addition, well, you can see twenty-six Lee Street, which is on the left-hand side. There's a little outline of the existing structure there.
Yeah, I can see that. Is that, so it aligns to the building to the left? It would align?
I'm, I'm not, well, twenty-six Lee Street is basically on the front yard property line. So we're not aligning to that. We're setting our building back eight feet from the front yard.
Right, right, but you see on the drawing to the left that you have kind of a hash to the building next to it. I'm trying to understand the modal alignment and so your, your building is set back but your adjacent, the adjacent of butter is coming forward more. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's why Madam Chair and um and Norm, I was just trying to understand the feedback from BPDA in terms of their concerns.
I, I think the answer is that the BPDA feedback was based on a very different plan.
Okay, is Jeff Hampton on to confirm that?
Uh, he's not gonna be on, but I, I, no, but I I think what you're saying is your front yard setback is more than the setback of the per, of the property next to you, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, we would meet the modal if one oh eight Child Street was not so far back from the center.
Right, correct, that's, that's why I'm, I'm okay with this and that's why I was trying to address BPDA's concern. Um, because I didn't see a problem with it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office defer to the judgment this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, this went through a lengthy community process. Uh, with the changes they made, they presented before the JPNC on February seventh uh where the Neighborhood Council voted to support overwhelmingly. Um, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. I do understand, I think there was a proviso in the JPNC letter regarding some kind of fencing. Um, the board might have more information than that on me, but just wanted to bring that to the record. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands, thanks. Great. Uh, may I have a motion?
Can I, can I ask the applicant to expand on the JPNC recommendation of the fencing?
Sure, if you bring up that same image, we can discuss that. So on the rear of the house where we've created this small patio, the rear of Butter requested we provide a six-foot fence at that property line.
That's why it says six-foot fence?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so it seems like you already are going along with the recommendations of JP.
Yeah, we, right, exactly, so we added.
Thanks for confirming that.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, board.
All right, have a good night, everyone. I'll see you on Tuesday.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.